Welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council. Today is October 20th, 2021. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Cosd.
We are thankful for this day, for its blessings, its opportunities, and its challenges. Let us offer thanks for our power to affect change in our community. Let us be a source of hope for those in need. Let us give gratitude for our opportunity to serve. Let kindness and wisdom be reflected in our actions. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Long has indicated that he will arrive after roll call, and I will mark him excused. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Cosd.
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Tate?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Seven present, one excused.
Item five is changes to the agenda. I do have a couple of changes I'd like to request. The first change is I'd like to add an item under item six on our agenda, recognitions and achievements, add a dedication for Deputy Chief Barnes under that. Also, I would like to move up item 10A6, which is Ordinance 86-21, to follow directly behind citizens' input. And also, item 12A, under new business, we have a nuisance abatement, appointment discussion. I'd like to remove that item for now until we can gather some more information. So there are the three changes that I would request. Mr. City Manager?
Can you brief the agenda with the changes requested? Wait.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, just a point of clarification, consent item number four, where it mentions dollar value, that is the dollar value for this fiscal year, not the dollar value for the entire term of the contract. I just want to make sure that that's clear to you because this is a consent item. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other discussions or changes?
One thing, I'm sorry. Under item 14, I'm going to vote to approve it, but I just wanted to ask the city attorney if we can get some sort of an update after the first of the year, individually as council members, not on the dais, but individually.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second for the changes. And if there's no other discussion, Madam City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Cosd?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to item six, recognition and achievements. We're going to have a presentation this evening for 30 years of dedicated service for Deputy Chief Lisa Barnes. I'll turn it over to Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In just a second, I'm going to have Police Chief Tony Sizemore come to the podium. But this is a bittersweet day for the City of Cape Coral family because we know that in the very near future, we are going to lose an individual that has given her entire professional career to this city and to the Cape Coral Police Department. This individual has risen through the ranks, starting off in patrol in the Cape Coral Police Department and working all of her way up to the rank of Deputy Chief. She's a true trailblazer. She has opened the door for many of the individuals, and especially women, that have come after her in the Cape Coral Police Department. She has accomplished a great deal, both for her community and for her profession as an executive law enforcement officer. And we're saddened because her time here is coming to an end. And so after 30 years of service, Deputy Chief Lisa Barnes has decided to retire and move on and begin the next chapter in her professional career. And so, Mr. Mayor, we find it fitting that you allow us just a couple of moments for members of the police department, Chief Sizemore, to just read a few, make a few comments to you, and I understand you have something that you want to also read into the record as well. And pardon me, Chief Barnes, for turning my back to you. Obviously, I had to face City Council, but thank you for the 30 years of service that you've provided to this great city and to the Cape Coral Police Department. Thank you, and I certainly wish you nothing but the best in your pursuits. Thank you. Chief Sizemore?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Tony Sizemore, Police Chief, good evening, Mayor and Council. As Mr. Hernandez stated, this is a bittersweet time. We have a true legend in the Cape Coral Police Department whose career has spanned 30 years. She began on the street, like all of our officers do, but quickly developed an acumen for investigations. And that talent was grabbed, and she went into our Investigative Services Bureau and spent many, many years fiercely advocating and finding justice for victims, especially our most vulnerable victims. She really had a passion and talent for the most heinous crimes that you could think of, sexual violence, crimes against children, and developed partnerships along the way with many different agencies and non-governmental organizations in that endeavor and put a lot of bad people in prison who did a lot of bad things and made our streets and our community safe. As stated, she has risen through the ranks, all the way up to Deputy Chief. And beyond ascending and achieving ranks, she has really enriched in the community and developed strong partnerships with Drug-Free Coalition of Southwest Florida, impacting positively young people, working with ACT, Abuse Counseling and Treatment Centers, working with the Human Trafficking Task Force, and being a mentor and an advocate internally as well, for women, as stated, but men as well. She has been a fantastic leader, and some of the best times in my career as a leader, I worked for Deputy Chief Barnes. And I can think of fewer greater compliments than to have somebody say, "I liked working for you," but I truly enjoyed working for her. I really enjoyed and learned a lot working alongside of her, and it's been a real privilege of mine to have her alongside of me in my transition as the chief of the police department here. I couldn't have done it without her, and I echo the thoughts of a lot of people who say they couldn't have done it without her. And there's fewer greater things that I can think of as a legacy is to have programs, procedures, and policies that you have created and you have implemented that will carry on beyond your time with an organization. And Lisa's done that. She has created a culture and many award-winning programs in a forward direction that will continue on, that inertia that she has created will continue on long past next week when she leaves our organization. So I will also turn my back and thank you for everything you've done, for me personally, the people in the back of the room, the people in the gallery here, and everybody watching. You've been a true asset and friend for the City of Cape Coral, and we thank you. And we have something for you at the conclusion of the speeches tonight.
Thank you. Maybe I'd ask Deputy Chief Barnes to come forward, and the Police Chief and the City Manager, and I'll come down. I know that, you know, it was probably difficult for you in the very beginning of your career, but like the City Manager mentioned, you were a trailblazer for so many people after you had started. So I wanted to thank you. I know the citizens of our community want to thank you for your dedication, your commitment, not only to your individuals that you work with on the police department, city staff, but to the citizens as well. So thank you. So what I'd like to do today is issue a proclamation and dedication for your service to our community. Whereas Deputy Chief Lisa Barnes has served 30 years with the City of Cape Coral Police Department, starting on October 26th, I'm sorry, October 28th of 1991, and retiring this year on October 29th. She has dedicated 30 years to serving and protecting the citizens of our city. And whereas Deputy Chief Lisa Barnes began her career as a patrol officer on the street, quickly transitioned to the detective bureau on November 20th, 1993, developed the passion for seeking justice for our most vulnerable citizens. And whereas Deputy Chief Barnes was promoted to the rank of sergeant on January 20th, 2004, and worked tirelessly toward ensuring that the Cape Coral Police Department maintained their prestigious accreditation with the Commission of Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. And whereas Deputy Chief Lisa Barnes was promoted to the rank of captain on October 17th, 2009, where she served as a bureau commander for patrol, special operations, and the investigative service bureaus. And whereas Deputy Chief Lisa Barnes was promoted to the rank of deputy chief on September 12th, 2016, commanding the operations division and later the administrative division of the police department, achieving the highest rank by woman in the agency of a 50-year history. And whereas in the recognition of Deputy Chief Lisa Barnes' dedication, hard work, tireless efforts, and behalf of the Cape Coral Police Department and the citizens of Cape Coral, now therefore I, John Gunter, Mayor of the City of Cape Coral, do hereby proclaim October 29th, 2021, as Lisa Barnes Day. So thank you. Thank you. Again, thank you, Deputy Chief Barnes. And one other thing I wanted to mention as well, I want to thank your family. As we all know, first responders, you know, they have to come to work seven days a week, 24 hours a day. And I know your family, over the years, have missed out on a lot of things because of that. So I want to thank your family for the dedication and the commitment to support you in that position. So thank your family as well. Okay, we'll move on to item seven is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of September 23rd, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, September 29th, 2021?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of October 6th, 2021?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, the citizens' input. The maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. Anyone wishing to participate in citizens' input will be used in the podium to the left.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Lou Navarro.
Hold on, Mr. Navarro, let's make sure that mic is on so everybody can hear first.
We can work in half, like 10 seconds.
Yes. I think it was only eight and a half, but we'll give you those back.
What we do with the school board, they're changing, you guys are there.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Lou Navarro, 48-year resident of Cape Coral, and I hope I'm going to be brave enough tomorrow to get my first shot. We won't go into that. I wanted to say, I did hear from the school board, a few members still communicate with me, and as far as I know, we brought this up about the charter school, they are looking into it, according to my information from the board members I spoke with. There is some precedence in Duval County where they can, due to that House bill in approval in 2017, give some of that half-cent tax money to renovations, like the bus barn that principal and the superintendent say they need, Donnie Hopper, I know him. So I'll leave you the stuff, I forgot it at home, but there is precedence, and as far as I know, Duval County did give them some money to charter schools to fix some of its construction, and that's what they approved on that, you know, ballot a few years ago. So that was my report, because I remembered we talked about it. I'm happy to hear about Sunsplash, I'm glad there's another one of my campaign promises you have fulfilled. I'm going to have to get my old campaign thing out again, but I'm happy about what you're doing on that, and I hope we can figure out something for the golf course, too. And I still like the old course, but we talked about it with Mr. Welsh. Are you planning to beef up the code enforcement, make them more proactive like they were here in the 70s and 80s, now that the governor signed the law that you got to give your name and address on a code violation? I know that you all went to anonymous because that fellow neighbor killed his other neighbor in Collier County about 25 years ago. So I don't know, I'm just asking, and I did bring that up. I guess that's, I've talked enough today, right? I can't think of, well, licensing. I would like, I'd like to see communications take a part in getting complaints because you are looking into unlicensed people, and there's a lot of people out there that, you know, it's the taillight warranty. Once you see my taillights turn the corner, it's done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input, please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any discussion from council on citizens' input? I know he's left, but I will mention one thing. I did receive notice that the Lee County School Board may be hearing our request, or at least having a discussion on that during their November 2nd regular meeting. If that's the case, then I will be attending that particular meeting, but I have not gotten confirmation on that, or the agenda has not been posted.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I do know, I mean, I haven't seen the agenda, but I have been told that that will be it, and I'm planning to go as well and speak.
Okay. Thank you. And any other council members that would like to go that particular evening, I guess, and you're invited as well. Okay, seeing none, no other discussion on citizens' input. We'll move on to item 10A6 that we moved up in the agenda tonight, Ordinance 86-21. Madam City Clerk, could you please read the title?
Ordinance 86-21, An Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Enter Into a Lease Agreement with PPW Cape Coral LLC for the lease of property owned by the City of Cape Coral at 400 Santa Barbara Boulevard, known as Sunsplash Water Park, for the operation of the water park. A copy of the lease agreement is attached here, too, and incorporated herein by reference, providing for severability and an effective date.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. In October of last year, the city received an unsolicited proposal submitted by Pro Parks pursuant to Section 255.055 Florida statutes, in which they express an interest in leasing the park amenity known as Sunsplash. And because it came in under that particular section of the law, you are required to follow the process that spelled out in the law, and that included posting a public notice for 60 days to notify any other potentially interested entities that the city had received an unsolicited proposal and that the city would be open to receiving proposals from other interested firms. The city did receive a competing proposal that was actually submitted by its own Parks and Recreation Department, and pursuant to city practices, we convened a selection committee. Both respondents were invited and gave a presentation that described their experiencing, their experience in operating these kinds of facilities, their business plan for moving the facility forward, and so forth. And so after the presentation, the selection committee made a recommendation to me, which was that we proceed to negotiate an agreement with the top-ranked proposal, which was submitted by Pro Parks. We then negotiated a, an agreement, a lease agreement with Pro Parks, and the item that is before you today is that actual agreement that will essentially lease the facility to Pro Parks in exchange for rent payments, a percentage of the gross revenues from the parks, and in exchange, the firm will be responsible for all aspects of running and maintaining the facility, with the exception of the parking lot. The parking lot is not included in the, in the lease. So that is an overview. I'm going to ask that the Assistant City Manager Connie Barron come to the podium, with any other appropriate staff, to assist her in walking you through the actual deal points that are contained in this item before you today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Connie Barron, Assistant City Manager. This is the presentation that we provided to council at the committee of the whole meeting. We thought it's important to present it again because this is the official public hearing on this item and on this lease agreement. I'm going to ask Wanda to go ahead and come up and go through it, just as she did the last time. We'll fill in any blanks that there might be in here. And then we also have Kurt from Pro Parks here, he's going to do a small presentation as well, and he's available to answer any of the questions that you may have.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Wanda Root, Procurement Manager. Some of this item, our City Manager went over it, but this is just an overview of Sunsplash and the water park when it was open, and the acreage, we're looking around 14 acres, and the timeframe that currently the park is open, mainly between March through September, sometime goes a little bit longer, I believe, this year, closed in October. And it also, in the past, have been the site of annual cocoa fest. Last year, as you all know, the pandemic kind of stopped some of the events. Just a quick agenda, the presentation's going to discuss very briefly the P3 process and the status, the key terms, financial analysis, and the next steps. The P3 is, you know, if anybody wants to read the statute, it's really, really exciting stuff, but in a nutshell, it tells us what to do and how a project is considered qualifying, which every step of the process has to come to council. Council's the one that advises us if it is or not and how to proceed. This slide pretty much shows the whole, all of the different points, and all the different determination that council and staff had to do, from determining that it was a qualifying project, which happened in October 2020, to issuing the RFP, to ensure to solicit other proposals, and make sure this is very competitive and beneficial for the city, to negotiating the contract. Florida statute has different published dates, it has to occur, timeframe, and that's why anything in blue is stuff that the city did. We also conducted an independent analysis to ensure that what we were receiving made sense and that it was beneficial to the city. Pro Parks, and I'm going to let him go over his short presentation that talks about all the different properties that they either own or manage. The main process and the lease that you have in front of you here, the key terms, it is being requested at 30-year, commencing November 1st, with two additional terms of five years each, so there is a potential of 40 years. There's always a question about where is there a termination clause? We are a governmental entity, and yes, we do have termination clauses by convenience or specific requirements that need to happen or for breach, so it is within the lease, and it's all stated there. The payments, their minimum rent, which is paid for July, August, and September, or those month, is paid on those month. The additional rent is paid March 31st of the following year. And the key, which everybody probably will look, is what is the city getting? Well, from a minimum rent, year 1 to 4 is $10,000, year 5 to 10 is 15, year 11 to 20 is 20, year 21 to 30 is 25. The key of the part of the revenue is the additional rent. We negotiated 15% above gross receipts of 2.1 million. And if you're wondering where the 2.1 million came from, that's the average of the revenues the city has received. So we pretty much says anything over that, it would be 15%. Just for fun fact, they had asked or proposed 10% over 2.2, and we negotiated 15 over 2.1. Just questions that have been asked, I want to make sure that is, you know, answered, too. The expensive is assist triple net, they pay all expenses, including utilities, taxes, everything. They're in, in charge of paying all of those items. The permitted use is the water park. Capital improvement, they are going to reserve and spend 4% Capital improvement, they are going to reserve and spend 4% of gross sales, not including anything they're going to give the city, but 4% of gross sales per year for capital improvement. They already have some plans that they would like to do with the water park. They are going to refurbish the Lacy River. We were very open and transparent and mentioned that we had gone out to a bid for the Lacy River. They're planning to add 25 cabanas. That's just kind of fun fact of kind of things they want to do with the water park. And within the first three years, they will refurbish and expand Pirate's Cove, which is, some people refer to Todd's spot, for the children and so forth. There are certain thresholds that if they're going to do anything, they will come back to council, and they would either advise council or request approval. So we, there were things in play in the lease to ensure that there was some involvement, but at the end of the day, they will be responsible for the water park and for all of the expenses related to the water park. Alterations and thus kind of exceeding $50,000 will require city approval and improvement becomes the city property. Financial analysis was conducted, and we use expenses fiscal year '25, and mainly that we use fiscal year '25 because the debt will be paid by then. So, right now, there's a delta of around $904,000, meaning that the expenses projected for the City of Cape Coral is 2.8, or I'm going to say 2.9, just I'm rounding up, but it's $2,893,725. It's a long number, so I'm going to say 2.9. The vendor is projecting a 1.988, 985. So that's where the delta is coming from. And as you noticed, there's some methodology that we use, and the main thing we wanted to ensure was to try to compare apples to apples as much as we could. So we did it at a year that we could remove the debt. Also, the allocation is not part of this expense for the city, so it was just purely For the 30-years analysis, if we continue, we being the City of Cape Coral, continue the current operations, it's expected a $9.2 million subsidy for the 30-year mark. So it'd be $9,242,827. And the bottom part tells you the methodology that was utilized, which is calculating a 3% annual growth, which is what we do every single year. We didn't change any calculations or any basis. Personnel expenses also calculated 3%, and the full cost allocation was removed. So even this analysis does not include the full cost allocation. And even with that, the city at this rate would have a subsidy in 30 years of around $9.2 million. From the negotiated proposal, which would be including a 15% above gross receipt of 2.1 in the annual rent that I mentioned, the city has a potential of earning $14,598,547. So around $14.6 million in a 30-year timeframe. The vendor is, the firm is calculating a 4.975% growth. Candidly, we asked the question because we calculate 3%, and their message is this is what they do, this, they have a business model that's successful in other places, and they do not see it not being successful in Cape Coral. Operating expenses are calculated 3% annual growth, and as I mentioned, they're paying all of the expenses, including utilities and taxes. Just for comparison, if we maintain $9.2 million subsidy based on the projection from our firm and negotiated proposal, we're looking at $14.6 million in receipts for the city in the same timeframe of 30 years. An independent financial analysis was done, the information was submitted to them, and their message is city status quo, the estimated present value cost of the city is approximately $5.9 million to continue to operate the water park, assuming a 3% growth rate. Agreed upon lease term, the estimated present value revenues of approximately $7.6 million, using 5% growth rate and a 3% discount rate. So it showed that it would be beneficial to the city, hence we went and brought it forward, and we were given authorization to negotiate. There was always question about staffing, and I don't know if Connie would like to mention what's the process on the staffing.
One of our biggest concerns and one of our biggest priorities regarding this potential lease in partnership with Pro Parks was to make sure that the employees who are out there and have spent some of many years providing the services of Sunsplash, that they are taken care of and that they can continue to work with the city. We have identified positions within Parks and Rec for, I think, four of them, and then another position that is actually going to be working with Wanda. So all of these employees, we had two non-bargaining employees, and then we had three bargaining unit employees. There are five total FTEs, full-time employees there. So all five of those employees will continue their careers with the City of Cape Coral in positions that are very similar to the positions that they currently work in, and in a couple of cases, they were increases in the position that they're moving to. So there are 124 contract employees. Again, they are contract employees, so they change from year to year to year, and we may have some that come back two or three years, we may have some that only come and stay for two or three months. So the contract employees were not a priority for us. Our priority was taking care of the FTEs, and we have found homes for all of them.
So next steps, this ordinance was introduced October 6, and we're here to have our final hearing. We do, I would like to bring up Kurt Caffey, that he has a short presentation, and after that, we would like to open it for questions.
My name is Kurt Caffey. I'm the president of Pro Parks Attractions Group, and it's great to be here today. I know you guys have seen a presentation at the Committee of the Whole that was provided by one of my other partners, John Hilton, but I'd like to run through that one more time, and I'll, I'll keep it brief because I know you have seen it, and we'll get, get to your questions. You know, our hope is to be able to bring more people to the City of Cape Coral, not only to serve the residents in a way that will make us all proud and give those experiences that can be repeatable year after year after year, but also to bring people from all the surrounding communities as well and grow the tourism. Who is Pro Parks? Our company does a lot of things, but really, we do three primary things. We own and operate parks, whether they're through Fee Simple Real Estate or through Leashhold Interest. We also do third-party management for other owners of parks around the United States. And then we also do training and certification. And just briefly, our training and certification is a global entity with businesses as far away as Malaysia and the Caribbean here and a lot here in the United States as well. But we serve about 300 different clients in the water park business through that, that part of our business. On the third-party management, we operate Kauabunga Bay and used to operate Island H2O as well. We do short-term management agreements for new owners to get their businesses up and running. And then on the Hawaiian Falls side, which is on the presentation as well, those are public-private partnerships, just like the one we're talking about today. We've had those in place for four or five years with our company, as we're a five-year-old company. But those agreements have been in place for, in some cases, almost two decades, and they've been very successful. I would also just say that my, me and my partnership group have a ton of experience. I started in the water park business in 1986, and I know I don't look that old, but I am. And all the other companies that are represented on the bottom of that page are where all my partners and myself have come from, and the time we've spent with those organizations has served us well. Maybe rather than us talking about our business, I'll show you a short video about what we So one of the things that also makes us unique is, and you know, my bio's up there, I won't read it to you, but I served as the acquisitions manager for a large real estate investment trust that bought 33 water park, theme park, and family entertainment attractions. And the benefit of that is, when you buy 33 of those, you looked at 150. And so I literally got to look at a ton of great businesses, see where the best practices were, and our formula for success is tied to a little piece of something we learned at each one of those assets and our previous history. We've already started the rebranding slash, you know, update of the brand, so it's a new logo for Sunsplash. What our key focus is, is safe and fun operations. Without that, nothing works. One of the keys to our success is providing multi-generational experiences. We like families to do family things together. And then we'd like to be resident-focused on our promotions. So we may have a little, a little higher price for an outer market to come to the park, but for the local residents, we do lots of deals and often do deals. Part of our transition process would be a redesign of a new website, which we've already built. This is a section from the homepage of that, just shows you a little bit about kind of what we're thinking from an overall look and feel. This also represents a little bit about our strategy on pricing. Your last season pass price was $79 at this time of year, and it went to 109. We're starting out at 49 with two free tickets and a whole list of benefits that come alongside that. And our goal is to really have a lot of season pass members. We'll sell them at a very low price, and we'll get a lot of redemption, and hopefully they'll use the amenity more and more and more. And that's been our success at all of our other water parks and theme parks as well. Just some of the things that we found to be highly successful in our other parks, you know, different offerings, the mix-it-up slushies are always very exciting. You can see those pictured in the top and the, in the bottom. Cabanas are a huge hit. People like to have private space, and we like to entertain folks, not only with the rides and attractions, but with fun and games. Think of it like a cruise ship director out there, really kind of engaging our moms, dads, and kids all together to really enjoy thems, enjoy themselves and make a memory. So our cabanas are, are nice. They've got little TVs on them. They've also got a, a small igloo cooler that's kind of built in with Wi-Fi so they can place orders and have that brought right to their cabana. It's got special lockable space, fans. It's a great little spot to relax for the day. We also love celebrations. We think it's really important to celebrate in the community, and these are some of the types of events that we do in other markets. Sometimes we host firework displays at the parks and partner with our cities. Sometimes we've done just random Texas slash Hawaii festivals that also bring out, you know, the best and some fun and different things. Champions Day is a special needs day where we let folks come in early and enjoy a day without all the noise and some of the craziness of a large, busy water park. Survivor Games is, is one of the things we do where families make their own family team, and they compete in a bunch of fun games, water balloons and, you know, wave pool and water, water fun. And then we always just want to celebrate, you know, Father's Day, Mother's Day, and all the big holidays that come throughout the summer, but we also understand that the city's done some great events at the park, and we want to build on those. That's really a quick summary of what we're looking to do, but we, we see this not as a quick turnaround, we see this as a decades-long relationship. And when you have a long-term view like that, it allows you to make good decisions for the long term, which is what we're all about. So that's the end of our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Caffey. I'll now open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 86-21? Please come forward.
Joe Mazurkowitz, City of Cape Coral, citizen. Kind of a reflective day for me, since I happen to be up in those chairs when we built Sunsplash. I think Sunsplash was built at the best of times for the, for the right reasons, because it was built to cover its operating costs, never was supposed to cop, cover its own debt. Because the alternative was to build a second yacht club, which was costing us way back then in 1993, $200,000 to $300,000 a year. So the subsidies for that was expensive, was expensive annually, so we thought this was an alternative. I have nothing against Pro Parks. I wish them the best. I am concerned, not for the interaction with Pro Parks, but presently, the City of Cape Coral General Fund gets a $500,000-plus annual transfer in for services rendered from Sunsplash. If you don't make those expenses go away, 30 years, $500,000. If nobody gets laid off, if there's no space freed up, at the end of 30 years, they were just bragging about $14 million, 500 times 30 is 15 million, you lost $1 million. You have got to get the associated cost for the annual support of Sunsplash gone for this to work. I don't think it's $500,000, because in 1993, and actually in the late 80s, we talked about establishing support for the general fund by making enterprise funds, making healthy transfers. And you can read between, read between the lines about what I mean by that. I don't think it costs the city $500,000 to support Sunsplash every year. Irregardless, if it does or it doesn't, you have to make that cost go away. Because if nothing happens, and you receive the money from this good organization and you run this show, at the end of 15 years, you lost $1 million to the general fund. Good luck.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on Ordinance 86-21? Please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 86-21?
So moved.
Who was the second? Councilmember Tate? Any, any discussion from council?
Can we address Mr. Mazurkowitz's concerns, please?
Yep. Go ahead. I don't have any lights, so Councilmember Tate, have the floor.
I just wanted to be able to address his concerns. I don't know if it'd be Mark or the city or whomever.
Sure, I'm going to have your Financial Services Director, Mark Mason, address the cost allocation issue.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Connie Baron, Assistant City Manager, with Mark Mason, our Financial Services Director. Yeah, I think that what Mr. Mazurkowitz was referring to was the full cost allocation. That's just one piece to what the city provides to Sunsplash right now. It wasn't the entire, when we're talking about that cost allocation that was taken out, remember, when we did the comparison, there's still that $9 million deficit over time, because we would not be able to invest this amount of money into the park to improve it. So, but I'll let Mark go ahead and talk about the cost allocation.
I think, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director, I think on a, on a net basis, there's, you know, the Sunsplash has generally had a loss on an annual basis. And part of that is, is that there's a full cost allocation in order to pay back the general fund for the services that are being provided. But at the same time, the city was providing funds to Sunsplash in order to make that work. So when you take the amount that we were, we were transferring to Sunsplash to make that work, and the amount that was coming back, it's basically a net, you know, probably a net loss on the, on the, on the trade. You know, there was, there was a cost to providing the service, but, you know, it's not $500,000. I think that's probably the answer that I think really needs to just be said. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council. We will keep you updated on the process of the transition, and we look forward to the new big grand opening in March, I believe. So, thank you.
Yep. Thank you for coming in today, Mr. Caffey. All right, we'll move on to item nine, is Business Consent Agenda is 9A. Is there any items on the consent agenda that council wants to pull? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Could you please call the roll?
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any personnel actions or no petition at the council, so we'll move on to 9- so we'll move on to nine D of appointments of boards and committees and commissions. D one is Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Madam City Clerk, we have one vacancy, and I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Your Honor, we have one vacancy today and one application received from Jack Schwartz. He was unable to attend today, but is very eager to serve on the board if the council appoints him. He is actually qualified for two different areas in the board that are not filled, the residential home building industry and the areas of labor actively engaged in home buildings. So we'd want to, if you decide to appoint, we'd want to place him in either A or C.
A or C. Okay, is there a motion on the floor for this individual?
So moved.
Second for A?
A, yeah.
For A, yes. Second agrees.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for this individual, and his last name again, please.
Schwartz.
Mr. Schwartz, and to place him in category A.
Correct.
Any discussion on that? Councilmember Welsh.
Yes, I just want to clarify. If for some reason we get another applicant who qualifies for A, will this applicant be able to move to C so he can fill the board, or is he locked into the A position?
He's locked into A.
Madam City Clerk?
I believe that would be up to council if they would like to make that maneuver if the event presents itself for a future vacancy.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your questions? Okay, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item nine, D two, which is the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. We have one vacancy on that. How many applicants, Madam City Clerk?
So, Your Honor, for this one, it is a planning and zoning vacancy on the A hack committee. And so there is a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board to appoint Mr. Robert O'Connor, and I believe he is present. If you had any questions. Recently, you had filled a short-term vacancy, and then it expired, so now we're back today.
Okay, so we have a recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission to appoint Mr. O'Connor to this position. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Robert O'Connor.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, nine D three, is the District Commission. We have seven vacancies on that particular board, and we have eleven applicants. So I think first I'd like to ask council, on this particular topic of discussion and on the Planning and Zoning Commission, where we have fourteen applicants, if we're going to give the applicants the opportunity to speak tonight, is there a timeline that we want to establish as a council for each member to speak?
One minute. Second. Sorry.
I mean, one minute with council questions, or two minutes, and we see how it goes.
One minute with council questions.
One minute. There's a lot of them.
I understand, but, you know, the citizens put their time in, and they're willing to serve. And even though I watched Planning and Zoning and got to see most of them, and I would do that for the Planning and Zoning Commission, it would be one minute, but we have not heard or had the opportunity to see anyone from the districting commission, aside from when we pushed it back. And we did give two minutes that day to the people that were here. So in all fairness, I would like to say two minutes for that one, and then maybe one minute on the other.
But I would...
Motion and second.
Wait, but here's my thought. Is we did, I mean, I did. I'm sure a lot of us did a lot of research on these applicants as they came in. I know I did.
We also interviewed two of them.
Social media pages, you know, Googling, looking at, you know, checking references, if you will, you know, like... I mean, I did a lot of homework on them, so I don't feel like, I mean, I kind of know most of them. I feel like I know what their backgrounds are and how they, you know, would be an asset to us. So I personally don't feel like I need two minutes, but if you all, I mean, I can, if you all disagree, then we can certainly change that motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor.
Repeat the motion?
I'm sorry?
Repeat the motion.
Madam City Clerk, please.
The current motion on the floor is to approve one minute per applicant for both the districting commission and the planning and zoning.
And then give, the motion maker was Councilmember?
Tate. I was the second.
And then we'll have, give council the opportunity to ask some questions.
Ask questions, of course.
Okay, all right.
That was my concern.
All right. Any other discussion? And we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to Madam City Clerk, to call up any of the applicants that want to speak for one minute.
Yes, Your Honor, we, as you mentioned, we have eleven applicants for the seven vacancies. Several have indicated whether or not they would be able to attend. So I'll announce that if it is known by me. But everyone has indicated a desire and an eagerness to participate and be a member. Okay? So Mr. Robert Crum was unable to attend this evening due to a scheduled conflict. Gary Edson?
Counsel, Mayor, this will be a record if I do this in a minute. I just wanted to say that I've been a resident of the city for five years, resident of Southwest Florida for twenty years. One of the things I love to do is to drive around the city and just see it, and we do that a lot. I think it's called management by driving around. And I see what the growth, and I think that I have a good insight into how we're structured and what we're doing. I also believe in good stewardship, and that's evidenced by the stuff that I do in the city for the Budget Review Committee, the Computer Club. I'm a part of BUPAC. I believe in being a part of the community, and I think I can be of service to you if you so desire. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Christina Redman? Again, as I mentioned, I wasn't necessarily able to hear back from everyone, but the ones, as I was receiving applications, have indicated an extreme desire to serve. Lawrence Gillis?
I'm Larry Gillis, and I'm from, just on the perimeter of Sands Park over in Southwest Cape Coral. And I'm interested in the districting commission. I've been a resident since two thousand eight, lived mostly in New Hampshire prior to that. I'm a retired criminal lawyer. I teach online at the University of Maryland Global Campus. That's what I do. As I indicated in my application, this looks like interesting work. The, it's important work. I'll just note for the record that I know none of you at all, and certainly not on a first-name basis. The principles that are in play, as I understand them, the district should be contiguous, and the number of people represented should be virtually equal in number. That looks pretty straightforward. I'm sure there are algorithms to help us. And I look forward particularly to a presentation from the city attorney telling us what the legal dimensions are of this process. I met her a number of years ago. And...
Your one minute's up.
She's thoroughly competent, so I look forward to her presentation.
Thank you.
The next on the list is Andrew Sund. He has indicated that he is unable to attend due to a scheduled conflict. Melissa Lastra?
Good evening. Thank you, council, for hearing me. My name is Missy Lastra, and I have a background here in Cape Coral. I've been here for eleven years with my wonderful family. The best decision we made, two of my five children live here, five of my eight grandchildren live here. Four of them are in the charter school systems. One of them will be in there next year. He's playing T-ball right now, so I want to get to that. I know that this city is an amazing city, and how it's growing, and it's growing for a good reason. And I think that redistricting is so important. First of all, whatever we come up with it lasts ten years. Second of all, it makes sure and ensures that all voters have equal say and equal representation. So I know that I'm qualified to do this job because of my background in operations and human resources management. You think about distribution, you think about auditing. I was an auditor, scheduling. Also, my background in statewide campaign management. We create our districts and our regions based on voter population and geographical areas. I think I could be a huge asset in this area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
William Harris?
Good evening. William Harris, and I'm a proud resident, citizen of Cape Coral. And I would look forward to serving my community by assisting with the districting process that's become before us. You have my credentials, and are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Tooney? Again, as I mentioned, very eager to serve, just had a scheduled conflict. Same for James Evelyn. He was unable to attend this evening. Richard Leon?
The name you probably didn't think you'd hear again in this room. So, good afternoon, council. My name is Rich. It's a pleasure to be in front of you today. If you have any questions, I stand ready for you. It'll be a pleasure to serve if you so choose, and to serve at your pleasure. Just a little background, as you know, I've served in your position for quite a few years, and then many boards, and it's weird to say that, you know, especially at thirty-four, I was here ten years ago when this council was deciding the redistricting at that time. So it's a little history with that, and being able to have the experience and knowledge to try to help this new board shape the next ten years. So I stand ready if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Carnes?
Good evening, council, and thank you again for seeing me. I know you heard from me the last time, so I'll be brief. A couple of highlights from my first time, as I believe I'm qualified to serve on this council. I have a master's degree in legal studies. I'm the chief operating officer at the Lee County Clerk of Court and oversee three hundred and fifty employees. I'm a longtime resident of Lee County. Been here for twenty years, and I'm really passionate about the future of Cape Coral, and I hope you give me the opportunity to serve. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes the listing.
Okay, I think what we'll do is, like we've done in the past, we will go down as a council and give our seven candidates, and we'll do it in the same order that we vote tonight. Madam City Clerk, I'll let you start.
Yes, Your Honor, and if I may, just add one point of information. While I did categorize all of the applications by district, it is not a requirement that it's filled by every district.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Cosden?
All right, I'll go slow. Crum? Edson? Redman? Lastra? Leon? Carnes?
So that is six?
Gillis.
And I'm going to repeat that.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Crum? Edson? Gillis? Carnes? Lastra? Leon? And Redman?
Correct.
Gunter?
Crum? Edson? Gillis? Sund? Lastra? Evelyn? And Carnes?
I'm going to repeat that as well. Crum? Edson? Evelyn? Gillis? Carnes? Lastra? And Sund?
Say that one more time, because you did them in a different order.
Certainly. Crum?
Yes.
Edson? Evelyn? Gillis? Carnes? Lastra? And Sund?
Yes, ma'am.
Hayden?
Carnes? Edson? Sund? Lastra? Leon? Gillis? Evelyn?
Edson? Evelyn? Gillis? Carnes? Lastra? Leon? And Sund?
Again, you didn't read them in the same order, so...
Sorry, I have an alphabetical order.
All right.
Long?
Edson? Gillis? Lastra? Harris? Tooney? Evelyn? And Carnes?
Edson? Evelyn? Gillis? Harris? Carnes? Lastra? And Tooney?
Correct.
Nelson?
Okay. Crum? Edson? Gillis? Sund? Lastra? Carnes? And Leon?
Crum? Edson? Gillis? Carnes? Lastra? Leon? And Sund? Shepherd?
Edson? Lastra? Leon? Carnes? Crum? Harris? And Kilos?
So I apologize. I have a little trouble hearing you. I have Crum and Edson? Harris? Lastra? Leon? And there were two more.
Edson?
I've got that one.
Lastra? Leon?
Got that.
Kevin Con? Carnes?
Carnes, okay. And one more.
Crum? Is it Crum?
I've got that one.
Kilos?
Kilos.
Did I pronounce it?
Gillis?
Kilos?
Gillis? Oh, I'm so sorry.
Gillis, I'm sorry.
Okay. Tate? We got, I've got them now. So that is Crum? Edson? Gillis? Harris? Carnes? Lastra? Leon? Okay. Tate?
Edson? Gillis? Lastra? Harris? Tooney? Evelyn? Carnes?
Edson? Evelyn? Gillis? Harris? Carnes? Lastra? And Tooney?
Correct.
Welsh?
Redman? Harris? Tooney? Leon? Sund? Carnes? Is there one more?
One more.
Edson?
Edson? Okay, so that's Edson? Harris? Carnes? Leon? Redman? Sund? And Tooney? Okay, you'll give me a moment while I calculate those.
And I just wanted to remind everyone that Mr. Edson, he needs two third vote, because he's on the Budget Review Committee.
All right, so that is four for Crum? Eight for Edson? Four for Evelyn? Seven for Gillis? Four for Harris? Eight for Carnes? Seven for... Seven for Lastra? Five for Leon? Two for Redmond? Four for Sund? And three for Tooney?
Can you do the last ones again, from Carnes down?
Mm-hmm.
I got Carnes eight.
Eight for Carnes? Seven for Lastra? Five for Leon? Two for Redmond? Four for Sund? And three for Tooney? So you had two with eight, and two with seven?
Mayor? Can I make a motion for the ones that have gotten the highest numbers and remove them, and then we can go back around?
Well, I thought what we were doing is whoever got the highest votes.
Well, we have some ties, we have some ties, and we have several that have fours.
Okay.
Can we, can we make a motion to appoint the top five?
That's what I was trying to do.
Top five, because those are, yeah.
So the motion would be for Edson? Gillis? Carnes? Leon? Lastra? Second.
And could you repeat those names again, please?
Edson? Gillis? Carnes? Leon? And Lastra?
And Councilmember Costin, did you provide the second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion on that? So we've taken the top five individuals with the votes, and we have a motion and a second on those five. So Madam City Clerk, could you poll council on those five individuals and a motion?
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, so I guess we will go down the voting order again, and we'll give our top two candidates. Is that correct?
Shouldn't we just focus on the three that got four?
Yes, out of those three.
All right, could you give us those names?
There were four people.
So I have four?
Four, four that got four, yeah.
Crum? Harris?
Crum?
Evelyn? And Sund?
So could you repeat that?
A little slower.
Yeah, one more time, please?
All right, yes. Crum? Evelyn? Harris? And Sund?
And we picked two out of those four individuals.
All right, and I'll just be a moment.
Okay. Any further discussion from council before we poll? Councilmember Welsh?
Are we only picking from these four, or are we picking from the remaining candidates?
Just from these four, because these four individuals got four votes each, is that correct, Madam City Clerk? Yeah, but the next highest, you know, maybe some of my votes would be different for the remaining two.
So I'm gonna potentially pick from not just these four, because I do feel a strong need to have some representation from other districts. And a few of these are doubling up in districts, so I do at least want to at least have my vote not restricted to the four that got the most, but the remaining candidates.
Well, that's not how I'm gonna vote, but if that's your desire, you have that, you have that right.
That's fine, if, you know, I'm not, just not trying to exclude anyone.
Any, any discussion, further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please poll council.
Costin?
Crum and Harris?
Gunter?
Evelyn and Sund?
Hayden?
Sund? And Evelyn, or Evelyn?
Long?
Harris? And Evelyn?
Nelson?
Crum? And Sund?
Shepherd?
Evelyn and Sund?
Tate?
Harris and Evelyn?
Welsh?
Harris and Tony?
All right, just one moment. So I have two for Crum? Five for Evelyn? Four for Harris? Four for Sund? And one for Tooney?
Okay, I guess we'll, we'll get a motion on the candidate that got the five.
Motion to approve Evelyn?
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we have one more position, we have two individuals that got four, Harris and Sund. I guess council can, can pick whoever they like for that last position, but one of my votes will be one of those two individuals. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please poll council.
Costin? Harris? Gunter?
Sund?
Hayden?
Sund?
Long?
Harris?
Nelson?
Sund?
Shepherd?
Sund?
Tate?
Harris?
Welsh?
Harris?
So that's four and four.
Okay. I guess we'll do it one more time.
Okay, just one moment. Costin?
Harris?
Gunter?
Sund?
Hayden?
Sund?
Long?
Harris?
Nelson?
Sund?
Shepherd?
Sund?
Tate?
Harris?
Welsh?
Harris?
The tie.
Four and four.
Okay, so I guess we'll get another list again.
Can I ask a quick question? Does it need to be seven by ordinance, or can it be eight?
We have an alternate.
All right.
Motion to approve Harris and Sund as an alternate then.
Madam City Attorney?
The number of members is in the charter.
So specifically states seven, but doesn't mention an alternate.
So we can name an alternate?
Are we allowed, Madam City Clerk, I'm sorry, Madam City Attorney, to name an alternate? Or do we have to follow what's in the charter, where it just specifies seven vacancies, or seven individuals? Okay. All right. Well, we, what we could do is go on to the next board.
Yeah.
Madam City Attorney, look that information up, and then we'll come back after we hopefully get through the planning and zoning.
Is that okay to do?
That's fine with me, is that fine with everyone else?
Yep.
Okay, and give her the opportunity.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll move on to the next item, Planning and Zoning Commission. On that particular, we have a commission, we have fourteen applicants, and we have three vacancies, two voting members, and one alternate. So I guess we'll do the same thing, are we okay with the one minute? All right? Are we okay with?
Yeah, that's part of the motion.
Okay, all right. So Madam City Clerk, we'll give each candidate one minute to have a discussion, or a presentation here to council. And then after that, we'll go ahead and poll, poll council.
Certainly. Donald Eppking?
Good evening, Don Eppking. The importance of Planning and Zoning Commission is paramount, and its heavy responsibility to present unbiased and insightful recommendations to the Cape Coral Council must be a priority. Being a subject matter expert in planning and zoning of real estate is not a must-have for the board, near is a long residency in the Cape. A board composed of members from diverse business backgrounds, where each member brings perspective and insight, plus the acumen to research and compartmentalize problems, will deliver the soundest advice to council. I have a business background of thirty years in industrial municipal water and wastewater equipment design implementation. I was the lead person or part of a team for strategic planning, product registrations with the EPA, and patent applications at major corporations and startups during my career. Current community involvement, I'm vice chairman of the Cape Coral Charter Review Commission, president of the Friends of the Cape Coral Environment, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and a member of the Adopt a Medium program for the southwest and northwest Cape. Why do we want to be part of P&amp;Z Commission?
Thank you.
Got you, thank you. So, speed reading is not good.
Thank you.
Mary Louise Bearden? Similarly to the districting, we did not hear back from everyone as far as tonight's appointment, but when they submitted their application, they were very eager to serve. Robert Bridges? Enrico Fierretti? Oh, I apologize, Robert Bridges?
Good evening, Mayor Gunter, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, thank you for your time this evening, and for considering me as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Ken Fierretti, my family and I moved to Cape Coral this year from New Jersey. We sold our house, packed up everything, and after a long and arduous journey, arrived here and moved into our house in May. I can honestly say I haven't had a bad day since. Professionally, I work in commercial real estate development, I've been an applicant dozens of times for various commissions, committees, and councils. My company did a project here in Cape Coral, we built the Tractor Supply and Pine Island Road. And although I wasn't the development manager for that project, I did receive weekly updates as part of our internal project and staff review. In all and all, it was a very positive experience, the store is open and is doing well. When I lived in New Jersey, I was commissioner on our planning board in my town, so I have ample experience on both sides of the, of the dais. As both an applicant presenting projects, and as a commissioner reviewing applications and voting on those applications. I'm very knowledgeable in all aspects of land use, and I always try to balance the sides of all issues.
Thank you.
Gilbert? Mr. Hecht indicated that he was unable to attend this evening. Julia Moore? Barbara Sefranic?
Hi, I'm Barbara Sefranic, I'm currently serving on the Planning and Zoning Board as, as an alternate. I was appointed by the council in February for a year term, and I'm here to ask for your, it's been a pleasure and honor to serve. And I'm here to ask for your consideration for a full seat at the table, and in the interest of time, I'll leave it with my paper application, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
Earlier this evening, you have appointed Jack Schwartz to the plan, to the AHA committee. So Mr. Schwartz indicated then that he would not be able to attend, but I just wanted to let you know, if council does select Mr. Schwartz, he would be required to have a two-thirds majority vote.
Thank you.
Stephen Soloway? Michael Sullivan? John Tlesky? Ms. Wolford indicated she would not be able to attend. Jeanette York?
Hi, my name is Jean York, and I've lived in Cape Coral for about ten years. You might have read in my application that I'm a lawyer, attended the University of Maryland Law School, and I'm currently a member of the Maryland Bar. I worked for the Department of Veterans Affairs in Veterans Benefits Law, both in Washington and in St. Pete. I say all of this only to explain, I'm familiar with reviewing, interpreting, and applying statutes, regulations, and procedures to specific situations. The commission's primary tasks are recommending text amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Plan, and the Land Development Code. Reviewing the text of those amendments and comparing to any relevant state or city ordinances to assure, ensure compliance would be something I enjoy, and I'm qualified to do. I had a lot more than that, and I had to cut it down while sitting here, so, thank you, hope I didn't skip over too much.
Thank you. Got all the applicants that are present? Okay, I guess we'll do the same. We have, I think, probably the easiest thing to start with is the two voting members. I guess we'll poll council for those two particular spots, and then after that, we'll visit for the alternate. I just wanted to mention, if by chance, that Ms. Sa, Sefranic, if she is appointed to one of those positions, then we would have to pick two alternates. So I just wanted to make that clear. Madam City Clerk, if you could poll council, please?
Costin?
Fierretti? And Sefranic?
Gunter?
Sefranic? And York?
Hayden?
Sefranic and Eppking?
Long?
Sefranic? And York?
Nelson?
Um, Sefranic? And? Fierretti?
Shepherd?
Epping and North?
What'd he say?
What'd you say?
Eppking.
Epping and York.
Eppking and York?
Yeah.
Tate?
Sefranic and Epping?
Welsh?
Sefranic? And Fierretti?
All right, so that's three for Eppking? Three for Fierretti? Seven for Sefranic? And three for York?
Can I make a motion to approve Sefranic to the term ending in 2/28/2023?
Second.
So are we gonna pick the other person, or just the one person for now?
Just one at a time.
One at a time, okay. We have a motion, and we have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Repeat the motion.
The motion is to appoint member, Ms. Sefranic to the term that ends in 2023. Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, if you could poll council again for the other voting member?
Who's, can you go over the, review the voting totals for that, the next round?
We had three individuals at three, Eppking? Fierretti? And York? Costin?
Fierretti?
Gunter?
York?
Hayden?
Eppking?
Long?
York?
Nelson?
Fierretti?
Shepherd?
Eppkin.
Tate?
Eppkin.
Welsh?
Eppkin.
All right, so that is four for Eppking? Two for Fierretti? And two for York?
Motion to approve Eppkin for the expired 2/28/22 term.
Could I ask the motion maker to extend and add the other two as alternates to save time?
If it's okay, I will. Okay, then I would add the other two to be alternates.
I'll second that.
So the alternates are York?
Fierretti?
Fierretti?
And York?
Good.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, Madam City Attorney, we'll go back to you for the last position on the districting commission.
The districting committee has seven members, no alternates.
Okay. All right, and so we, we have appointed seven, is that correct, Madam City Clerk, if you could refresh our memory, please?
So we have six?
Okay, so we need to appoint one more?
Can you read the six again?
I don't know that that answered the question, can we have an alternate?
No.
No, the attorney.
No, the Attorney General's Office has opined that when a board has a certain number by statute or by ordinance, then, and it doesn't provide for alternates, then there's no authority to appoint alternates.
To appoint alternate, okay.
Can you read the remaining names then, please?
I'll be just a moment. So there were two in our last round, and it was Harris and Sund. And we also have Redman and Tooney. And...
So you're saying we have four? I'm sorry.
No.
Yes.
Two with the same name.
Yeah, Harrison and Sund, right? Okay, okay. That's what I thought.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please poll Council.
Costin.
Harris.
Gunter.
Sund.
Hayden.
Sund.
Long.
Harris.
Nelson.
Sund.
Shepherd.
Sund.
Tate.
Harris.
Welsh.
Harris.
So that's four and four.
I knew it.
Okay.
Can I speak on behalf of Harris?
Councilmember Tate.
I just want to say Harris is in the district, so I know that that doesn't matter anymore, but...
Which district?
Four.
Oh, he's in mine.
And we don't have anyone from four.
Okay, then, yeah, I'll change my vote. I'll change my vote. I'll change my vote.
Harris was also here, just letting you know.
I know.
So, let's re-vote and see how it goes.
Another tally?
Please.
Costin.
Harris.
Gunter.
Harris.
Hayden.
Sund.
Long.
Harris.
Nelson.
Harris.
Shepherd.
Harris.
Tate.
Harris.
Welsh.
Harris.
So that is seven for Harris and one for Sund.
Motion to approve Harris. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Costin.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Item 9E. E1 is Water Quality Update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have Paul Klingon and Mike Ilchisen and other public works staff come to podium to give you your regular water quality update.
Thank you, Paul Klingon, Public Works Director. Maya Robert will be given an update on the water quality, where we stand with that in Lake O, and Mike Ilchisen will be updating on the bubble curtains and any other issues you have. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Maya Robert, Public Works. We've had about 70 complaints total since the beginning of the offset of the green algae blooms in the tidal canals of the Rubicon. The complaints and the reports have been tapering off this past week. The contractor finished the scheduled work to harvest the green algae blooms, and it's being disposed. At that time, with the weather cooling off, less sunlight, and salinity have been rising much more in the canals, we're gonna consider seizing the work of harvesting algae at this For the Mackay Canal System Blue-Green Algae Bloom, the contractor performed a peroxide-based algicide, and it seemed to be efficient. We've been monitoring the concentration and sightings in that system. It seems to be working, and we hope that the shift of season, we're gonna not see that come again. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers released Friday three batches of Marlin runs to improve CC. The good news is that we are seeing quite a few that seem to be really addressing our needs, but also addressing the needs of other stakeholders in the system. It's just a lot of work and a lot of runs to go through, but we're confident that we'll find something that will work for us. The lake stage is pretty high, but it's not unusual. There's still no release from the lake, and the salinity's been rising. On my memo that's dated from Monday, we were still in the healthy range target. In the past two days, we passed slightly out of the range from 750 to 2,100 CFS, but not by much. I think we had 2,168 CFS, so we're slightly above, but it's still based in runoff. Nothing is coming from the lake. There's still blue-green algae on the lake, but with the season change, it's not much anymore, and we haven't seen any blue-green algae for several months now. And I will let Mike know. Let you continue on the bubble curtains.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Ilchisen, Assistant Public Works Director. The good news, or the bad news, is we have no exciting update on the bubble curtain. Where we were last time I updated you, we're just awaiting the feds to release their biological opinion and issue us a permit. Everything else is on standby, ready to go. Staff is prepared to install and do what we need to do. We will, once we do get, I guess, forward-thinking, once we do get the permit issued, we'll have to come back to you with the final agreement with FWC, so you will see another action that you'll have to authorize at that time. With that, we'll open it up to any questions or comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayden.
Well, you know who's gonna have the first question on this one. When we did, it's been what, about a month or so since we did the test? It sounded like at the time that this was gonna move rather quickly at that point, that Fish and Wildlife is gonna send their results to Army Corps, and Army Corps was gonna issue the permit. Has Fish and Wildlife sent their report to Army Corps yet? Do we know? And what, whether the lay be?
I don't know at this point if they've sent their report to NIMPs. We can certainly inquire on that. That was the next step, was for them to write, kind of do a write-up on the field analysis. There was one step that preceded that. They had to send the soundings to the manufacturing company to basically generate like an acoustical report, and then FWC was going to write their analysis based on the findings of the analysis. So we'll circle back with...
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll circle back with them, see if they've gotten that data back, and if they've written the report, kind of get an update as to where they're at.
And I think the technology was different, but for people that may have seen the report earlier this week on bubble curtains somewhere else that had failed, I don't remember if it was Collier County or where it was, that was, had to do with the micro bacteria, but it didn't sound like it was the same technology, because it wasn't keeping the algae out. Did you see that report?
I have not seen that report.
I don't, I don't think it was the same technology, but...
There are several different types.
It did talk about bubbles, and people may have gotten confused that this is the same technology that we were using, but it's not.
Yeah, there's three kind of bubble technologies out there. One is a nano-bubble technology that actually has microbubbles that attaches itself to the surface area of the organism and floats it to the surface, and then they skim off the algae. That's not one we're using. We're using a gross bubble. And then in that space, there's a continuous curtain wall. They typically deploy that around well-drilling rigs in the Gulf. It's a solid ring of bubbles. Ours is, as you know, separated by several feet of gaps. So there are several technologies out there in the bubble curtain space.
Councilmember Tate.
Um, I don't know who this is for, but you know, like you said, we've had about 70 complaints at least. I know in my district, along the Rubicon, and some of the other canals off of Del Prado and the Gold Coast area, we've been getting a lot of complaints. And you're telling us that none of that is the harmful blue-green algae, correct?
Correct.
And we've sampled everything.
That's the filamentous green algae, correct.
Okay, and when you say that we're harvesting, are we harvesting in those areas where these people are? Because we have people calling and saying, you know, they have sore throats, they have this, they have that, you know, the different effects that we saw last time. So are we working in those areas?
So we were working along the Rubicon Canal System. There were several canals that seemed to be like the accumulating area. As the wind was shifting from the east, the west, the north, and the south, it was kind of pushing it all around that Rubicon chain. And so we were basically staging our harvesting equipment at the points where it was congregating. Basically, we were letting the wind blow it to us. So we did not get to every single canal in that area, but we got to the ones that were the most impacted, so that we, per hour, removed the most amount of algae out there.
Okay, and I wanted to thank you. I know that you might personally went out and looked at some, and you actually talked to the residents. I appreciate that, because they're very concerned, and they get a little frightened when they see it in the canals. So I appreciate the one-on-one. Thank you.
Just one quick question, reference to the bubble curtains, and you may have addressed this in your last presentation in our last meeting. Have we sent letters to the residents? And the reason that I ask that, I happen to be a guest speaker at the Cornwallis Community last night at their HOA, and that was some of their questions that they had. If we've identified where we are going to be placing the electrical equipment out in the right of way and bore through the yard, have we notified those residents yet?
We have not notified any residents yet. I'm pretty confident that I know what will be in the permits for the federal regulatory agencies, but until I get that permit and know exactly whether or not they want us to bundle the cables under the water, whether they want us to shroud it with some pipe, how they want us to handle any type of issues that they're worried about with entanglement, I'm not, I don't want to approach the residents, because I don't have a good, sound, you know, document to say this is what we're doing in the water. I'm fairly confident we know what we're doing upland, but until we get that permit and figure out exactly what they want us to do in water, I don't want to approach them, because there'll be a possibility of some unanswerable questions at that time. And as you all are aware, when you have questions that are unanswered with something like this, it just causes undue stress and a need to, you know, be worried about something that really shouldn't be. So we're gonna wait till we get that and then approach them.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for the update. Next item on the agenda is 9E2, the COVID-19 update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm hoping that this is the last time you'll be seeing Chief Lamb come to the podium to give you a COVID update. I think he's gonna give you generally good news, and I'm planning this to be the last one for quite some time. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Lamb.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chief Lamb with the Fire Department. If I can get this popped up, apologize. I've lost the cursor. Certainly, overall, though, we are experiencing good news. I believe Lee Health has stopped providing information. I haven't received anything from Michael Nachif in a few days. Last I heard was somewhere around 54 individuals in hospital from the Lee Health system. We are continuing to see decreased numbers across the state. I think we're down to even a 3% rate of positivity statewide for numbers. We are seeing a bit of an uptick in testing across the street, but that is, I believe, because we have announced a two-hour PCR rapid test out of that location. It is still free, but this is the more detailed PCR test that gives you the greater sensitivity, and we're getting results back typically in two hours, but up to four is why they're getting results back. So, good news there. We still have a good access to testing, and numbers are down across all forms here. And I apologize, it looks like, see if the errors work here, and I apologize for the size that it is. But again, we are receiving results quickly at that location. We're still seeing individuals locally utilize our testing site, and again, these are over the whole week. So, day in, day out, we're closer to about a 3% rate of positivity. The age breakdown, and I'll quickly try to get you to the state numbers. Yeah, you can see that 3%, 3.8% rate of positivity. And these are the last 10 days across the state. You can see those numbers just continue to diminish in that rate of positivity on the bottom line. Any questions that I can answer for COVID? It's certainly not over, but we are seeing, in our employee base and all measurable things, we're seeing significant decreases.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Lamb? Seeing none, thank you, Chief, for the update. Okay, we'll move on to Item 10A, Public Hearings. Ordinance 69-21, Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 69-21, An Ordinance Amending the City of Cape Coral Land Development Code by Amending Article 4, Zoning Districts, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Table 4.1.6, Use Table, Regarding Home-Based Businesses and Home Occupations. Amending Article 4, Zoning Districts, Chapter 2, Specific Regulations by District, Sections 4.2.1, 4.2.2, 4.2.3, 4.2.4, 4.2.5, 4.2.11, 4.2.12, 4.2.13, 4.2.14, and 4.2.15, Regarding Home-Based Businesses and Home Occupations. Amending Article 5, Development Standards, Chapter 10, Specific Use Regulations, by Repealing Section 5.10.4, Home Occupations, in its entirety. Amending Article 5, Development Standards, Chapter 11, Conditional Uses, by Repealing Section 5.11.10, Home-Based Businesses, in its entirety. Amending Article 5, Development Standards, Chapter 11, Conditional Uses, to Create Section 5.11.10, Home-Based Businesses Regarding Home-Based Businesses. And by amending Article 11, Definitions, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Section 11.2, Definitions Regarding Home-Based Businesses and Home Occupations, Providing Severability and an Effective Date.
Mr. Peterson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Robert Peterson for staff. This is the second public hearing on this item, and as you heard at the first hearing, and I can do the whole slow show if you'd like, but I'm sure it's probably fresh in your memories. This implements the recent legislation passed for all of Florida, and it allows home-based businesses will be allowed as a conditional use in all of our residential zoning district. It replaces the scheme of home occupations that we formerly had in our code for many years, and tracks the allowances and the requirements of the statute. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to delve in.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I'll now open up a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 69-21? Please come forward. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Ordinance 69-21.
Second.
Any discussion from Council? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Costin.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Ordinance 83-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 83-21, An Ordinance Amending the City of Cape Coral Official Zoning District Map of All Property Within the Limits of the City of Cape Coral. By rezoning property described as a parcel of land lying in a portion of the east half of the southeast quarter of Section 7 Township 43 South, Range 23 East, as more particularly described herein. From single-family residential to commercial zone, property is located at 4550 Burnt Store Road North, providing severability and an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Chad.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council of the Record, Chad Boyko, Principal Planner with the City Planning Division. This is a privately-initiated rezoning application. The owner of the property is Sandy Stebbenjovan. The location is 4550 Burnt Store Road North. The size is 12 and a half acres. It does not have any utilities currently... The size is twelve and a half acres. Uh, it does not have any utilities currently to the site, and they are seeking a rezone from single-family residential to commercial. This, there was a land use change that was done on this property that was approved, I want to say, last year, that took this from single-family to commercial professional future land use. It's one parcel in northwest Cape Coral. It's got frontage on Burnt Store Road. It's a little ways north of the, uh, proposed RV resort that you have there at the corner of Durden Parkway and Burnt Store Road. Uh, there are no silly utilities. However, along the front of this property, there are utilities that run down from Charlotte County. Those are to service the RV park. There is some capacity there, not a lot, depending on which, uh, property develops first along this corridor. And the applicant is seeking this rezone to develop this commercially. The current zoning, the proposed zoning before you, on the left-hand side, in the yellow, you have single-family residential zoning. That's, uh, repeated to the north, south, and to the west. And then across Burnt Store Road, you have unincorporated Lee County area. And then the proposed zoning is commercial professional as indicated in the red. Uh, we looked at this for our land development code, and we have six standards for review. Uh, we have generally found that the proposed zoning is consistent with the commercial professional land use. There is also the professional office district that's compatible. However, the applicant is seeking commercial, and staff finds that it's appropriate. Uh, staff also finds that the uses that are allowed within commercial zoning will be adequate and appropriate for this location. Uh, it has frontage on a principal arterial, so you're gonna have high counts of traffic. Uh, the site is somewhat large at twelve and a half acres, uh, so you think that you'll have a high-quality development there. And also, there is room for buffering and stormwater and parking and all those things that you're looking for in a nice development. Uh, that city has a well-documented need for commercial land. Uh, once again, we find that it's appropriate, given that it is along Burnt Store Road. Uh, and you also, you have seen changes along this corridor, especially from going north from Durden Parkway and Burnt Store Road, uh, part, partly because you have large parcels there, uh, partly because you have the widening going on with Burnt Store Road, and then also the RV resort has spurred some of that, uh, interest in commercial development along there as well. Um, once again, uh, we find that it's appropriate for this designation. Uh, you could have had the, the professional office district, however, uh, with that traffic count that you'll have along Burnt Store Road, uh, the C district is, uh, very compatible there. We did, uh, our analysis per our comprehensive plan. The future land use, and it kind of reiterated what we had mentioned earlier, based upon compatibility and appropriateness of that commercial zoning district. Uh, and our recommendation is approval, and we also had this in front of the Cape Coral Hearing Examiner, and she too recommended approval on this, and we have not had any correspondence either, uh, for or against this while we have advertised this. I'm here for any further questions.
Thank you. I now open public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance eighty-three dash twenty-one? Please come forward.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Joe Mazurk is President of BGM Consulting here on behalf of the owners and applicant of this property. Uh, we have read staff's recommendation. We com, uh, agree with it. Uh, we believe that it is complete, uh, and we would like to make a part of our record as well. The only additional information I would like to add is that, uh, I believe it's in, indicative of, uh, and, and, and becoming almost obvious that there is a nice commercial node forming at Durden and Burnt Store, and this is, will be presently the northern end of that commercial node. Uh, and the owners are go, are planning to build, use the property, build it and use it themselves. The front, a restaurant, uh, overlooking the creek that traverses the property on the no, uh, southeast corner. And then behind it, they will be building an office facilities for their personal business. So, uh, they are looking forward to, uh, developing this site and, uh, and operating both the restaurant and their office building in the rear. We respectfully request you approve this rezoning application.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on Ordinance eighty-three dash twenty-one? Please come forward. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve, eighty-three twenty-one.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-one. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-one, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Official Zoning District Map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as a parcel of land lying in a portion of the east half of the southeast quarter of Section seven Township forty-three South Range twenty-three East, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein. From single-family residential to commercial zone, property is located at forty-four fifty Burnt Store Road North, Providing Severability and an Effective Date.
This is a quasi judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Once again, Chad Boyko, Principal Planner at the City's Plan Division. Uh, this is gonna look a whole lot similar to our last presentation because they're literally right next door to each other along Burnt Store Road. So this is another privately initiated rezone application. The owners of this one is CC Land Development Company, LLC. The location is forty-four fifty Burnt Store Road North. It's a little over eighteen and a half acres in size. There are no utilities, and they are seeking a rezone from single-family residential R one to commercial C. Area map, it's undeveloped, northwest Cape Coral, north of the proposed RV resort that has currently, uh, experienced some stop-start development. Uh, they had their land use amended to commercial professional last year by City Council. No utilities are available to the site. However, there are Charlotte County utilities along the front. And then the applicant is seeking to develop this site commercially, uh, based upon the changes that have happened along Burnt Store Road, and at the intersection of Durden and Burnt Store with the RV resort being developed. Current zoning is single-family residential. It's repeated to the north and to the west. To the south, we have another parcel that was also recently rezoned to commercial. And then outlined in red is the proposed zoning of commercial. Uh, we did our analysis per the land development code. Uh, we found that the commercial zoning is compatible with this property based upon its size and its location, uh, near a commercial node, and its frontage along Burnt Store Road, uh, Burnt Store Road. Uh, the surrounding area is mostly undeveloped, so you're not gonna have a lot of homes that would, uh, be suddenly shocked or surprised by commercial development at this area. It's a sufficient size, so you'll have buffering, parking, stormwater, all of those things we look for in high-quality development. Uh, City of Cape Coral has a need for commercial zoning. Uh, this will add a little over eighteen acres along a principal arterial. Uh, and, uh, staff finds that you could also rezone this as a professional office district. However, its size and its location, it really does warrant that commercial zoning district. Uh, we also did our analysis per the comprehensive plan and found that similarly, it is compatible and appropriate for this area for the commercial zoning district. And then we recommend approval of this, and we also held this before the Cape Coral Hearing Examiner, and she also recommended approval at her hearing as well. I'm here for any further questions.
I now open public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-one? Please come forward.
Good evening, Linda Miller with Avalon Engineering, representing CC Land Development Company, LLC, on this rezoning, um, amendment. As Chad mentioned, the land use was changed, um, this past year, August eighteenth, to commercial professional. And as Chad mentioned, the property to the north, as you approved this evening, and the property to the south adjacent to this particular site has the same zoning and land use of commercial professional. Uh, just wanna let you know that in the city's comprehensive plan, it does specify that Burnt Store Acres, Burnt Store Road will support two hundred and ninety-five acres of commercial uses. So we feel that this, um, application supports the city's comprehensive plan and will plan for commercial needs of this area in the future. I stand by to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the Ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-one? Please come forward. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-one?
Second.
Any discussion from council? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Ordinance seventy-six dash twenty-one. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance seventy-six dash twenty-one, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article One, in general, Section two dash one point two, Departments Established, By changing the name of the Community Development Department to the Development Services Department, Providing Severability and an Effective Date.
Mr. Mayor, no presentation. This item before you is just, um, recognizing that the role of the former Community Development Department has changed over time, and this, um, name change better reflects the, uh, the role that they play. Thank you.
Okay, I now open a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance seventy-six dash twenty-one? Please come forward. Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed.
Motion to approve, Ordinance seventy-six twenty-one.
Second.
Any discussion from council? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Move on to Ordinance eighty-two dash twenty-one. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance eighty-two dash twenty-one, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter seven, Taxation, Article two, Public Service Tax, Sections seven dash eleven through seven dash fourteen, Pertaining to public service taxes levied for electricity, metered natural gas, liquefied petroleum gas, either metered or bottled, and manufactured gas, either metered or bottled, Providing Severability and an Effective Date.
Mr. Mason?
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Mark, uh, Mason, uh, Financial Services Director. Uh, as you'll recall, as we developed the, the budget, uh, for fiscal year 2022, part of the discussion was to include, uh, or to repeal the, um, the exemption for the first five hundred kilowatt-hours, as well as a discussion of adding the, uh, public service tax levy of seven percent to the metered natural gas, liquefied, uh, petroleum gas, uh, et cetera, which basically is propane. So essentially, this, uh, okay, now I gotta figure out how to go back. At this point, so this ordinance is to amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter seven, taxation, et cetera, uh, that is pertains to public service tax, uh, that is levied for electricity, and to add also the metered natural gas and propane. So this is governed by section, uh, statute one sixty-six, two thirty-one to two thirty-four. It provides for the authorization to levy up to a ten percent tax, however, the city has selected to do a seven percent tax. Also provides for some exemption, exemptions. One of those exemptions is the first five hundred kilowatt-hours on a residential property. In April of 2013, the City Council implemented the public service tax on electricity at seven percent. Uh, this tax was based upon the number of kilowatt-hours purchased each month, which is pursuant to the statute, and the exemption was also provided, again, for the first five hundred kilowatt-hours of electricity. This, uh, ordinance will repeal that, uh, five hundred kilowatt exemption, uh, as we talked about during the preparation of the budget. We estimate that the revenue that will come in from this repeal will be approximately two, two point six million dollars, and we will dedicate those funds towards the charter school system. Uh, this represents, uh, on a per-household basis, approximately twenty-six seventy-six cents, uh, per year, per meter annually, or two dollars and twenty-three cents per month. In addition, this ordinance would add the seven percent, uh, public service tax on metered natural gas, liquefied petroleum gas, either metered or bottled, manufactured gas, the, gas, either metered or bottled as well. We estimate the revenue from this would be approximately two hundred thousand dollars. Give you an example of what that would mean, uh, if a, uh, you buy one of the propane tanks, uh, at, say, fifty dollars, you go down the Lowe's, we'll call it fifty dollars, I think it's less than that, uh, the, the additional tax on that is three dollars and fifty cents. So the, that's basically the numbers that we're kind of talking about. We also do have, uh, some gas lines that are, uh, that, that do come into the city, natural gas lines that come into the city. Uh, the, uh, we do service, uh, some gas lines down to the water plant. Uh, exemptions for, we do have natural exemptions that are included in the public service tax. In other words, all government properties, all government buildings are exempt from the public service tax as well. So the next steps for us, uh, assuming that City Council adopts the ordinance tonight, uh, we would, uh, require to send the ordinance by, uh, statute to the, um, State of Florida's Department of Revenue for implementation on April first, 2022. This is primarily, the way it's written, is that you can only implement a public service tax on a, on the, at the beginning of each quarter. So in this case, it would be October one, or January one, or April one, or July one. The primary reason for that is, is Department of Revenue needs about four months from its notice time, uh, to notice all the properties or all the providers that the tax is now, uh, being levied, and it's time for you to start collecting that tax. Gives you an opportunity to change whatever you need to change as far as your systems are concerned in order to be able to collect the tax and remit the tax to the State of Florida, and then it comes to us. And so, here for any questions or, or discussion?
Thank you. I now open public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance eighty-two dash twenty-one? Please come forward. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance eighty-two dash twenty-one?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from council? And Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item ten A six, uh, we moved that up in the agenda, so we've already, uh, covered that, uh, particular topic. We move to Ordinance eighty-seven dash twenty-one. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance eighty-seven dash twenty-one, an ordinance amending City of Cape Coral Ordinance seventy-four dash twenty as amended by ordinances thirteen dash twenty-one and forty-six dash twenty-one, Which adopted the City of Cape Coral Operating Budget, Revenues and Expenditures and Capital Budget for fiscal year 2021 by decreasing the total revenues and expenditures by a total of twenty thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars, Providing Severability and an Effective Date.
Mr. Mason?
Yes, sir. Apparently, I'm not, uh, quite prepared for this one. I thought there was another one in between us. Sorry about that. I'm still a little electronically challenged here. All right, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director, uh, real quick, uh, this is budget amendment number three out of four. Uh, we will be bringing you another one next month, uh, which will be basically the final one. We have the option to, opportunity to amend the budget right up through the end of the November, uh, by statute. So the purpose is, is to amend, uh, Ordinance forty-six twenty-one, which amended the fiscal year 21 operating budget. And, uh, this will be the fir, third budget amendment for fiscal year 21. And this does recognize any City Council actions approved during the third quarter, any encumbrance carryovers or forwards, carryforwards that came in from fiscal year 2020, uh, and as, as well as any personnel adds or deletes, and any balance forward adjustments to align with the fiscal year 2020 financial statements. So overall, uh, the net decrease is approximately twenty million fi, uh, twenty thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars, uh, and, uh, provides for an amended budget of one million seventy, one billion seventy-nine million dollars. General fund, uh, we recognize some grants awarded to us, uh, fire hazard mitigation grant, uh, plus a match of a forty-one thousand dollars. Uh, we're reversing a budget amendment, uh, number two for the American Plant Rescue Plan Act Funding and Transfers of twenty-seven million dollars. Uh, we originally had put, uh, twenty-seven million dollars as a placeholder in the budget. We put it in the general fund with the plan of actually transferring it over to wherever it is that we were gonna do, and whatever project we were gonna do, and I believe that the City Council had elected to apply these funds towards the, uh, water and sewer, uh, lines that are gonna be coming down into the CRA. Uh, so that dollar value today, although the total amount that we received from the CARES grant is approximately twenty-five point four million dollars, uh, the, we're budgeting for the first tranche that came in, in fiscal year 2021. The next tranche will actually come in in fiscal year 2022. Uh, so we're gonna be looking at actually only budgeting for the first tranche. And, uh, and we'll be applying it directly to the water and sewer project as opposed to putting in one fund, transferring it to another, that sort of thing. Uh, moving the CARES Act funds into reserves, as you'll recall, uh, there were some CARES Act funds we received from the county. Uh, we're actually gonna reserve the entire amount of five point five million dollars. Uh, this is set as the reserve. Uh, I don't think, uh, because of this, we'll not need to actually amend or adjust the current financial policies because it'll be a by ordinance. Uh, bring the fiscal year 2020 encumbrances, uh, into fiscal year 2021. That two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, a justify, uh, a wild twenty-one, that two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, adjust a fire, uh, wildlife conservation funds to actual financial statements, per the financial statements of forty dollars. Uh, we're also adjusting the fund balance to actuals, which we discussed with you and, and told you we would be doing during this budget amendment, as you'll recall, uh, fifteen point five million dollars, and then increase the police budget for fiftieth anniversary badges that were offset by revenue, uh, that, from the sale of the badges. So it's basically revenue in, revenue and expenditure out. The special revenues, uh, side, we have some recognized sale of properties from the housing programs, so when, uh, we go out and improve a property, or, and, or we've, we purchased a property and turned around and improved it, and told, and turned around and sold it, uh, these are funds that we need to then re-recognize and re-budget on it regularly. So as we purchase properties, and we did this under the NSP program, uh, so as we purchase properties, when we turn around and sell them, we need to recognize the revenue that comes back in from them. Water park, uh, we had some repairs to the lazy river, uh, of eighty-eight thousand dollars that we needed to recognize. Golf course, increasing, uh, the, oh, the parking lot resurfacing budget by a hundred and ten thousand dollars. These are things that I believe the city council is, uh, is aware of and has approved in the past. Parks and Rec programs, uh, increased for some repairs to the aquatics bathroom, and the, just the road impact fees, fund balance carried forward to actuals as well, of five point six million dollars. Debt service fund, increasing the debt service fund, uh, for the station twelve debt of three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Resolution seventy dash twenty-one, Everest Water Park Clarifier, uh, where actually, uh, this was approved by the city council. All of these items, uh, are, are, we're actually bringing into the budget now, uh, you know, so these are the items that have been approved by the city council previously. I'm not going to, I, I can go through each one of them, but, uh, I think the Nicholas Parkway West Access Management of two million dollars is coming in from utilities and public works. Also, we, we've received additional funding for the grant award for the river crossing, and we just received another one, but that will be as part of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, uh, budget. Have some stormwater equipment, the Blue LJ, uh, response and recovery of one million dollars, uh, Parks and Recreation Dock Seawall Improvements Grant was awarded to us of eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, and then we have the, again, the first tranche of the American Rescue Plan Act funding, uh, we've put into the Utilities Capital Project Fund of the twelve point seven million dollars. In addition, we added a half an FTE to the Senior Construction Inspector for Lot Mowing, and as well as, uh, we're recognizing the Charter School Board's, uh, final budget amendment on August seventeenth of six hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that's it. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. I now open a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance eighty-seven dash twenty-one? Please come forward. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion for ordinance eighty-seven dash twenty-one?
No move.
Any discussion from council? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Uh, we'll move on to ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-one. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-one. An ordinance approving and granting to South Florida Water Management District a perpetual conservation easement upon property owned by the city located in Section Four Township Forty-Five South, Range Twenty-Three East, Lee County, Florida, as shown in official records book four oh nine, at pages sixty-four and sixty-five of the public records, as more particularly described herein, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute the deed of conservation easement passive recreational uses. A copy of the deed of conservation easement passive recreational uses is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews?
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. Dawn Andrews with the Real Estate Division. Ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-one is approving and granting a perpetual conservation easement to the South Florida Water Management District upon a portion of the Oasis Woods Park. Oasis Woods Park is one of the new neighborhood Go-Bond parks located directly south of the Oasis High School. I have a location map. Yeah, backwood Linda Boulevard over on the east side, Oasis Boulevard here, we've got our charter schools there, and Idabicker High School over there, and the Southwest R Road Plant, Utility Plant over to the north. Oasis Woods Park is also going to be renamed the Joe Coveyello Park. Currently, there are existing nature trails and a wetland, and wetland areas. The new Go-Bond improvements will include additional walking paths, a boardwalk, picnic shelter, outdoor classroom, restrooms, and parking. The conservation easement is approximately twenty-seven acres. The Oasis Woods Park is approximately just over fifty acres in size. The city's design consultant, AECOM Technical Services, had submitted for construction permitting on behalf of the city, due to the existence of the wetlands, the South Florida Water Management District required the dedication of a conservation easement or a payment into the mitigation bank. I have an overlay of where the conservation is over our park improvements. Kind of hard to see, but you can see all of the various, uh, walks, and there's a boardwalk in there, as I had said. Staff has opted to establish a conservation easement over the area, and that aligns with the city's vision and intended public use of this environmental park. We stand by for questions.
Thank you. I now open up a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-one? Please come forward. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion for approval for ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-one?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion from council? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item ten B, Introductions, Resolution two thirty-four dash twenty-one. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Resolution two thirty-four dash twenty-one. A resolution providing for the vacation of plat for easements underlying a previously vacated alley and public utility and drainage easements, lying in lots fourteen through twenty-five, block fifteen forty-three, Cape Coral, Unit Seventeen, as more particularly described herein. Property located at three eighteen, northeast Sixteenth Place, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be November third, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just, uh, like to ask the city clerk to please clarify something. On my agenda, it's showing lots fourteen through twenty-six, and I think she read into the record fourteen through twenty-five.
Let me take a look at the documents. If I can speak on behalf of the Community Development Department, there is an application in the packet for lots fourteen through twenty-five. I'm looking at an exhibit with a, um, meets and bounds legal description, and it references lots fourteen through twenty-five and a part of the vacated alley. Perhaps it's a Scrivener's error on the agenda. There is an information sheet from the Lee County Property Appraiser that references fourteen through twenty-five as well. And let me take a look at their, um, presentation. They have a copy of a presentation in here, too.
The ord- excuse me. The ordinance is only for fourteen through twenty-five.
So, uh, Mr. City Manager, I believe it is a Scrivener's error on the agenda document only.
I want to make sure we clarify that for the rest of, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to Resolution two thirty-five dash twenty-one. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Resolution two thirty-five dash twenty-one. A resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Bimini and Skylark Canal Rights of Way and all underlying easements located adjacent to lots thirty-one and thirty-two, block one twenty-six, Cape Coral, Unit Five, providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements associated with lots thirty-one and thirty-two, block one twenty-six, Cape Coral, Unit Five, property located at five-two-zero-one, Skylark Court, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be November third, two thousand twenty-one.
Any discussion from staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Resolution two forty-one dash twenty-one. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Resolution two forty-one dash twenty-one. A resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Majestic Canal Right of Way located adjacent to lots fifty-eight through fifty-nine, block twenty-seven, Cape Coral, Unit One, Part Two, property located at fifty-three oh-two, Malaluka Court, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be November third, two thousand twenty-one.
Any discussion from staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance eighty dash twenty-one. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance eighty dash twenty-one. An ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral, the City of Cape Land Development Code, amending Article Three, Development Review, Chapter Three, Specific Review Procedures, Administrative Permits and Approvals, Section three point three point six, Administrative Deviations, Regarding Deviations for Boat Canopies, Amending Article Three, Development Review, Chapter Four, Specific Review Procedures, Quasi-Judicial Permits and Approvals, Section three point four point two, Deviations, Regarding Deviations from Marine Improvement Dimensional Standards, Amending Article Five, Development Standards, Chapter Two, Accessory Structures, Section five point two point ten, Visebo's Sun Shelters and Similar Shelters, Regarding Height Requirements, Amending Article Five, Development Standards, Chapter Four, Marine Improvements, Section five point four point two, General Requirements, Section five point four point three, Dimensional Standards, Section five point four point four, Joint Marine Improvements, Section five point four point six, Davits, Watercraft Lifts and Floating Docks, Section five point four point seven, Boat Canopies, and Section five point four point ten, Construction Standards Regarding Requirements for Marine Improvements, Deleting Section five point four point five, Keys and Mooring Piles, and Creating Section five point four point eleven, Deviations, Establishing Procedures for Deviations From the Requirements of Chapter Four, Amending Article Eleven, Definitions, Chapter One, General Provisions, Section eleven point two, Definitions, By Adding Definitions for Sun Shelter and Thatched Roof, Providing Severability and an Effective Date. The public hearing will be November third, two thousand twenty-one.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance fifty-seven dash twenty-one. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance fifty-seven dash twenty-one. An ordinance amending Chapter Nine, Health and Sanitation, Article Three, Disposition of Garbage, Sections nine dash sixty-four through nine dash seventy-five point eight of the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, pertaining to refuse removal for residential dwellings and commercial establishments within the city, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November third, two thousand twenty-one.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance eighty-five dash twenty-one. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance eighty-five dash twenty-one. An ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Engineering Design Standards by repealing pages H dash one through H dash nine of Section H, seawalls, and replacing the repealed pages with pages H dash one A through H dash one M, H dash two A through H dash two K, and H dash three A through H dash three G, attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November third, two thousand twenty-one.
Any discussion from staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item eleven, Unfinished Business. Eleven A is follow-up items for council. There's none listed. Council have any follow-up items? Seeing none, we'll move to item twelve, New Business. Twelve A, we had a nuisance, nuisance abatement appointment discussion, but that was removed from the agenda earlier in the meeting, so we'll move to item thirteen, Reports. Uh, Council Member Cosden, report.
Thank you. Um, I attended the groundbreaking for the Cultural Park and Gator Circle Parks. Um, I chaired the local coordinating board meeting, the Committee of the NPO, and on Saturday, I'll be speaking to the Cape Coral Democratic Club. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Hayden, report.
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, I also attended the, the two groundbreakings, and then, uh, last Friday, I got a surprise. Um, I went out to a, an event they had ahead of the City Golf Tournament, and there's a new company out there called Sustainable Energy Technologies, Inc., or SETI, and they've developed a new energy source, uh, that promises to revolutionize the, uh, green power market for electric vehicles, and they had a golf cart on display that was, uh, equipped with what's called a capacitor. It's, it's similar to battery, but it's definitely not a battery. It has nothing to do with lithium or lead. It's, uh, biodegradable. It's light, and, uh, has a lifespan of fifty years, and, um, it's being developed by a Lee, it's, one of the developers of the product is a Lee County man, and they're also using, uh, Palmetto Pine as a research area for their golf carts, uh, which will, some of them will include the battery. Uh, the golf cart, uh, shop, or, uh, where they store the golf carts will, uh, also use solar pow- power. This, uh, particular energy source is, has the capability of, uh, storing power, um, that can be used by that, um, by those businesses, rather than selling it, um, back to the grid. So it, it has a promising future. They're going to have an unveiling a week from Friday, out of Palmetto Pine at, at three thirty, where the developers will be out there to discuss it, and they're also going to be, even though their distribution plan is in Elkhart, Indiana, they're also going to be looking for office space in Cape Coral. So it's kind of exciting, it's kind of exciting to see the new technology, and, uh, I look forward to their advancement as it moves forward. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Council Member Long, report.
Uh, yes, thank you. Real briefly, I just want to bring to council's attention, um, as a result of my review of the, uh, city auditor's, uh, report on the Lake Kennedy Audit, it was brought to my attention that, um, that the city does not have a dedicated grant writer, uh, although the police department has their own grant writer on staff, and the fire department has their own grant writer on staff. We outsource, um, to, I, I understand a couple different, uh, companies that are involved in, I guess, determining the availability and the need for these grants. I just did a quick look and to see what we paid, uh, to, in particular, one group that's used by Parks and Recreation, to outsource and review the grants, and that amount was sixty-four thousand. It's my understanding that the, uh, city manager's office uses a different, uh, company, and I don't have those figures available. Cross-reference to that with the figures of the salaries of the, uh, police and fire, respectively, which average about seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars. I brought that, uh, forth to the city manager. I'm not, uh, completely understanding whether that was something that he was already aware of, and, and maybe looking into the possibility of getting our own grant writer here at the city, or whether that was something that, um, was brought forth by my discussion, but I'm told that he's going to look into that and, uh, report back to us, so I look forward to that report.
Thank you. Council Member Nelson, report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it was busy last week, it felt like. Um, I attended the, uh, sign unveiling, uh, for former, uh, Council Member Carriosa with the mayor, as well as Council Member Hayden. Um, also attended the cultural park groundbreaking, and, um, a great treat over the weekend was to go to a ribbon cutting for the new pet vet, which my foster kitty will be going there on Friday to get shot, so I'm excited about that business, um, in our town, and, uh, next week, I have Horizon Council. And next week, I have Horizon Council Strategic Planning Wednesday and Thursday all day, so I'll report back on, on how that went. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd, report.
No report.
Councilmember Tate, report.
No report.
Councilmember Welsh, report.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to inform council that on November 3rd, our next general voting meeting, as well as the other meetings that day, I will be out of town. So, I'll not be attending any of the meetings on November 3rd. With that being said, I am also looking forward to bringing forward the city asset naming policy and introduction during that meeting, since I won't be there to talk about it. We've already gone through a Cal with it, but it should be coming up pretty soon as a follow-up on that. Aside from that, I am looking, now that I've got the Parks and Rec Advisory Board done and I've got the naming policy done, looking for some more projects. And one of the projects I want to look at, so I'm hoping to get a second on, is looking at our code of ordinances, 6.2.1 and 6.2.6. These are referencing boat parking at homes as well as trailers or campers with the growth of a lot of the houses exceeding to the line. I want to sit down and work with Community Development Director on what maybe we can do to allow people to maybe park their boats on the side of their house, if there's any way to allow them to. You know, we kind of limit the recreation of what people can park to boats only. So, I know there's people that have toy haulers, there's people that have pull behind campers that they'd like to store at their house that are much smaller and maybe much different than a giant 26-foot boat with a 12-foot platform on it. So, I want to kind of go through that code and, and look into it, potentially changing it and bringing it back to a future Cal meeting. So, if anyone else is interested in that, I'd be interested in working with the city on it.
I think, just so you know, Councilmember Welsh and I, I don't see Mr. Katera in, in here, but I know that we, we took a look at this here recently, I think just prior to you getting here and being elected. So, I think, if I'm not mistaken, probably in 2020, we took
It was. It was ordinance 44-20 was the update, but the update was more on the ability to park commercial vehicles and into the, you know, that was the only changes I really saw in that ordinance. So, I looked back. I haven't looked back further to see what ordinance was prior to that. I wanted to just gain maybe a second or someone to be able to allow me to go further.
Yeah, I will tell you that some of the changes that we made, we limited it to two, two boats. They had to be on trailers. And there's, there was some other discussion about cargo trailers, about other types of trailers. And at that time, we elected only to move forward in the direction that we did back in 2020. So, since we just visited, me personally, I wouldn't support it, but if you can get a second, then, then that would
I just, I just feel it's unfair that someone can have a boat, but someone can't have a pull behind camper. You know, if I, if I couldn't swim or was afraid of water and my neighbor has a big giant boat, but I can't keep anything but a pop-up camper, I don't think it's fair. You know, I think that Cape Coral now is a city that's growing, and we're also a city that doesn't need to be as restrictive as a gated community. So, it's something that I'm passionate about, of removing some of the restrictions on homeowners because we do buy land here and we all do use recreation in different ways. So, I think there's a way that we can come to an agreement on some things, and if it's not the time to do that now, if I don't get a second, then I will probably revisit this again at the beginning of next year and wait until someone is willing to allow me to pursue this further.
Councilmember Cosdine?
Thank you, Mayor. I do agree with you, actually, Councilmember Welsh. I remember I made the case, the similar case when we, when we voted for this, but I'm not going to give you a second because I don't think that it would be a productive discussion. I don't think it would. Just, I don't think it would pass. So, while I appreciate where you're coming from, I just can't second at this time.
Councilmember Nelson?
I agree. I mean, I, you know, applaud you for this, but we literally just, I feel like just went through this like two years ago, and it was bare of a discussion, and I, I don't think it would pass either, so.
When I, when I looked at the discussion previous, some of those council members are no longer on council, so that's why I figured now with four of us on here, three new people, that maybe it would be a time to
It wasn't, it wasn't necessarily the council team, it was the residents. The amount of, and back me up, guys, but the amount of correspondence that we received regarding that issue and many, many others, Councilmember Welsh was enormous, was probably the biggest next to waste pro in terms of fan mail that we received. So, although, you know, I, I don't disagree with you, you know, my, my concern, it's, it's the culture of our community at this time, and I just don't think we're ready for that, so.
So, I'll do some more research, and I will view those meetings and look into what was actually said and see if any of that corresponds with what I am interested in talking with Mr. Katera about and maybe just have a one-on-one with him before I bring it back again for another second. So, I'll, I'll withdraw my request for a second and do a little more research.
Councilmember Tate?
No.
Okay. All right. Any other report? Councilmember Welsh?
That was it. Thank you.
All righty. I'll try to be quick here. October 8th, I was the guest speaker at the Council of Progress at Coral Ridge Funeral Home. On, also on that particular date, I was the guest speaker and participated in the Gator Circle Neighborhood Park with several other council members. October 9th, I participated in a Pop Warner football game at the Calusa Middle, Middle School where I was, did a coin toss. Wednesday, October 13th, I attended the John Carrillocha Softball Field Dedication with the Parks Department at the Cape Coral Sports Complex, and council member Carrillocha's family and friends were also present in that dedication. Wednesday, October 13th, I attended the Metropolitan Planning Organization Executive Committee Meeting. October 14th, I attended the Lee County Board of County Commissioners Reception at the Burr's Home. And on October 15th, I was a guest speaker at the groundbreaking ceremony at the Cultural Park along with several other council members. Also attended the Grand Open and ribbon cutting of the Cape Coral Pep for Vet on Saturday, October 16th. Tuesday last night, I was a guest speaker at the Cornwallis Neighborhood Association General Meeting. And I think that's, that's it up to this point. Madam City Attorney, you have a report?
I have no report.
Mr. City Manager?
No report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on. I think that, lost my page here, so just bear with me here a second. All right, time and place of future meetings, the committee, the whole meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 27th, 2021, at 3:00 PM here in council chambers. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.